Right, good evening members and good evening members of the public. Two, this town council, a full council of Ramsgate Town Council. And we'll start as follows firstly, could you turn your mobile phones off to silent or whatever? Turn them right off, please don't use them at all while the meeting is going on. Thank you. So move straight on to the agenda, item one apologies.
We have apologies from councillor Crittenden who's unwell, councillor Driver who has a family commitment, councillor Hudson a family commitment, councillor Young a family commitment, councillor Dark who's unwell. No apologies from councillor Ara.
Thank you. Item two declarations of interest, anybody got a declaration of interest in relation to any items on the agenda this evening? That's Rustin.
Ramsgate's Gate Park project.
Thank you.
Councillor Wing and I on.
Thank you. Item three, public request to speak, we do not have any.
Oh, sorry, item two, number two.
Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon. I skipped over, I do that often. Yes, councillor, item two, number two of item two, to receive the written report from the town clerk to consider whether to permit councillor Dark to be absent from council meetings due to ill health for an extended period of absence.
So councillor Dark has been unable to attend any council meetings since July. This was initially following an accident and most recently due to illness. As per section eighty five one of the Local Government Act, members are asked to consider whether to permit an extended period of absence. And as a starting point, I've suggested another three months from the twenty ninth of November, February, so that councillor Dark does not become disqualified from office. The council could approve an absence of a longer or shorter period if it wishes.
Members, any comments? Councillor Wing?
Do we, I mean, obviously, somebody's ill, so I don't want to be disrespectful. But it does seem we've got another fairly long period. Is there any idea of how long councillor Dark might need to recover?
Sure answer to that is no, don't know. We've not got that medical information. I think I'm quite happy if town clerk agrees that we will ensure that we contact councillor Dark over the next few weeks to see whether she thinks that she will be well enough to return to this chamber. And if the answer is that is no, then obviously she would then need to resign and then there would be an election.
Could I suggest then that we just approve a period of one month and that is actually good.
You can certainly request that, can I just ask councillor Green to come in first?
I was going to suggest extending it until the next council.
We already have an extension in place until the end of February this year. This extension would be for a period past that. So whether councillor Green, what do you mean, to just keep the current extension in place?
From one council meeting to the next.
That would be mine, yeah.
Members, any other comments at all? No? Okay, you've got, we've got something on the table, so to speak, which is for, we look at it on a month-to-month basis.
The council meeting, but council.
Yes, what I'm saying, council can get on a month-to-month basis. And in that meantime, we will have as much discussion as possible that we can have with depending on her illness and how it's affecting her with relation to that. Members, all in favour, please, please show. Okay, let's carry it, thank you. Item three, public request to speak, we do not have any, I am advised. Item four, minutes of council meetings, to approve the following minutes, the twenty ninth of November, twenty twenty three. And only questions of record may be considered in this, so. Anybody got any comments in relation to them, oh, sorry, Anne-Marie.
I was at the meeting, I'm not on the list.
Oh, I.
I haven't missed it.
No, you don't.
So we can update the official minutes.
Yeah.
In my diary, it's in there and everything, so.
Okay, members, anybody else got any comments to make on the minutes? I have a proposer for those minutes, councillor Austin, the second of councillor. Sorry. I beg your pardon. All those in favour, please show, thank you. Right, item five, finances, and this includes the twenty four, twenty five budget and precept. Item one of item five is to receive a report of payments. The council is asked to note the payments between the twenty fifth of November, twenty twenty three and the thirty first of January, twenty twenty four, authorised by the town clerk and finance officer, which is a total of twenty two thousand ninety four pound and ten p. And approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and finance officer, which is a total of a hundred and eighty four pound, nine hundred and eighty seven p, sorry, a hundred and eighty four thousand pound, nine hundred and eighty four pounds and forty five pence. These sums are higher than usual due to there being no council meeting in December. Members, any discussion, which is councillor Green?
If there are no queries, I propose acceptance of.
Councillor Green?
There's an energy bill that we're battling. Is it like that we've charged thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen pounds and seventy two p?
In error.
Yeah.
And that, that, and that money has been returned to us in full. Interesting, in January, they tried to take a sum in excess of twenty thousand pounds. We have complained because it's, there'll be many organisations wouldn't have the money to pay these in error.
It's got the post office all over it, is it not?
Also, I mean, this is reference to Radford House, but I actually looked at the side eyes on, which wasn't easy. I looked at all of the, all of the costs in the, in the two bits, over one K and under one K. And the total spend that is directly related to Radford House for this clearing, fifteen thousand forty pounds fifty six p. I, I, I want to express some concerns, which I think that overall amount is actually three quarters of the last period spent. I, I, I want to express some concerns about, about how Radford House, the costly, the running costs of Radford House and also the, the capital spend on Radford House. I'd like to know what that looks like going forward, but I also want to express some concerns about possible future liabilities and are we overstretching ourselves as a council? And I'd also like to see that, that Radford House is sectioned out so that we can, you know, it's a big project and we need to see that excluded from the normal day-to-day running of the, of the council. But I was quite shocked at the amount that, that was obviously spent on Radford House. So that should bring the time without the massive capital spend that is likely to be.
Well, if I, sorry, carry on.
Very soon, within the budget, there is already a separate heading for the day-to-day. Yeah, the, yeah. And Radford House as a project. So it is already within the budget, which is where you've got your information.
Yeah, I, I mean, what I'm asking is, because I just went through the list and put it in and I can clearly see some of its running costs, so example, the business rates are running costs. And then there are other costs, so for example, removal of asbestos and survey costs, which are capital costs. But, you know, it would be useful, particularly because this is a project which is going to extend, stretch us. It would be, it would be, I would find it quite helpful, I threw it and sectioned it out. But it would be quite helpful if we could have each meeting those costs separated out because it's not our normal business, Radford House, this is an additional thing that we're undertaking. So I'd certainly like to see it separated so that both residents and councillors can get a much clearer idea of, of, of the associated cost to this project.
I mean, before I bring councillor Green, you know, I mean, I'm happy.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that and have that separate, all on the, on the agenda.
Thank you.
So not a problem with that, councillor Green?
I was going to say the same thing, Chair. Radford House is obviously a huge undertaking for this council. I think councillors and the public deserve a full report on, on the customs. I'd suggest we do that for the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine, everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
We're all agreeing with that. Any other queries at all, thank you for raising that, councillor Wing. Any other queries at all in relation to this item? Okay, councillor Green, did you propose?
I proposed that we, whatever it is we've been.
Do that thing, that there's a standalone, a set standalone item about Radford House.
Yeah, yeah, if you expect it, that's, that's what we're expecting. So whatever it is.
Whatever.
Mystern.
So to note and approve.
Note and approve, can I have the second of for that, please? Councillor Austin, all those in favour, please show, thank you, that's fully carried. Right, item two of five, to receive a report from the town clerk and finance officer regarding the precept and budget for twenty twenty four, twenty five. The council is asked to approve the precept and budget at this meeting.
So TDC gives the last opportunity to confirm the precept. Within the coming year, the, the budgets themselves can be amended. But there's only one opportunity to set the precept and TDC are expecting that information from us tomorrow. So when the draft budget was previously considered by yourselves, there was two areas where you wanted more information. The first was the cost of the community ad magazine. And we have information in front of you from the marketing and communications officer, who is also at the back of the room, should there be any questions. There is a certain amount of element of information that actually is not available to us because this is a private business and how, how they do business is, is their information. One thing to, I think as we're remembering when looking at the cost of a community ad magazine, is it's not just the printing costs, it's the distribution and it's the distribution to every single residence in the parish. Do members have any questions?
Is this the budget as a whole?
No, so this is, I'm trying to break it into, so this is about the community ad.
I do think it needs overhauling, but it's really great to hear that a vast majority of people want to keep it going. And, and, you know, it comes through my door on a regular basis and I do really think it's a useful, a useful little document. So, yeah, well worth the spend.
Thanks, Austin.
Can I just add from the change, the task group, we've put a series of items in about wanting to set up a repair cafe and so on. We've had a lot of interest, lots of people ringing up and emailing and so on, which is.
Good. Yeah.
Either people actually read it and take on board things and think, oh, that might be something I'm interested in.
Yeah.
For getting across to people.
That's good. Um, somebody else, councillor?
A copy, it's pretty good.
Hello. Yeah.
So that's it for the.
That is good.
I think that there's not many councils that can boast that they have the means of contacting every single household on a regular basis.
It doesn't involve IT, so there's a lot of people without access to it.
Absolutely.
The next area where the council wanted more information, ideally a full business plan, but unfortunately it's, we don't have enough information available, is for the East Cliff Lift. TDC's cabinet are due to receive and consider a report regarding the transfer. I believe the outstanding item to be included in that report is the head of estates has requested that the building and the concession separately be valued. And I think that that's the missing piece before it goes to cabinet. And then there would be a recommendation to TDC as to the appropriate way of disposing of one or both.
Can I just come in on that? Please, Laura, sorry to butt in, but just to let members know that I have been contacted by a local estate agent who advises that they have a client who wishes to take a lease out on the lift and wishes to work it. The concession wasn't mentioned. I obviously put them in, in contact with Andrea Plant, TDC, the head of service, for them to have a discussion with, with, with her. My, my view to this stage was that, my advice to him was that he awaits our, or taking the lift over and, and then doing his business with Ramsgate Town Council instead of Thanet District Council. Because I think that would serve Ramsgate better. And I mean that in a nicer way, really, I'm not being particularly putting anyone down, but I just think that it would be, once, if we get it, we can deal with it quicker and, and we can see what benefit it will have to both the town council and to the town. Councillor Austin.
Have I understood that, the person who's interested in the lift, just the lift, not the concession?
That's as far as, yeah, I don't understand, no. That's, my only, my only thought to that was, the only way, why would they want to do it? That's the first question. So would they want to charge, they'll probably want to charge and whatever. So there's all these kind of things, but I just thought, chuck that in, chuck that on the fire and watch the sparks fly, really. And then just, just so that, that is out there, I probably shouldn't have said it, but it's out there anyway now. Sorry, Laura.
I've also requested a copy of TDC's valuation for reinstatement, which is the basis upon which they're insuring the building. And then I can get our own insurance quote. TDC don't have any record of the electricity consumption from when the lift was last operational. I've requested the costs associated with the lift in Broadstairs, which is not like-for-like. The mechanical, electrical is, systems are not comparable, but it would be, it would be something that we could use, yes. Repair costs, we know, to around thirty five thousand for urgent repairs and twelve thousand for a new lift driver. These prices were correct at May twenty twenty one. We also know that there's, that there is a problem with the lift being unable to travel to the top of the shaft. It gets as far as the building at the top and it is botting into something which then is a fail-safe, it stops. Our lift engineer knows what the problem is and doesn't think it's a big problem, but I haven't got the full information around this. However, on the sixth of February, there is a survey of the inside of the lift taking place. TDC is facilitating access, that's with our surveyor and our lift engineer. And also I've let the ward councillors know if they happen to, if they wanted to go along and ask some questions. And then I think it would be beneficial for actually council to be given the opportunity to meet with the surveyor and the lift engineer so that actually you can speak directly to the people with the relevant mechanical and electrical knowledge. So there, there is progress, there is some more information, but not a full business plan that I can present you with at this time.
I thought it was a big key that you put into the.
No, it's on, it's on the top, it's. I'm doing that. Okay.
So the, the, the next thing I've added to this report was at FNGP, when the, the draft budget was last considered, there was an explanation report that went through kind of the key, the significant changes of what's in, what's out. So I've reattached this again, I can go through it if members wish.
Members wish that? I'm happy Laura reading it all out to you.
Is, is that a rabbit, what I was saying, it's the palms, it's the removal of the palms or under the. You know, I mean, it's a main route in, you know, you know, I'm still frustrated that we can't get graffiti removed in that area feared. But if we, if we, if we remove, if we remove the palms, then we have these holes with nothing in them that are still rotting and birds' muck and weeds. And at the minute, at least we have palms in there that look okay, just like, like, around them. And so it really concerns me that by removing the palms into town, they need to be rotated round. But it really concerns me that we'll just have run-down holes on the main road in town.
I think, sorry, Laura, I, I think we've got, we've got to grasp, we've got to grasp the nettle. The palms are too expensive for us to keep, to move about. Costs us too much money as a council for moving plants about. And I think we're going to have to grasp the nettle regarding that. However. Councillor Austin.
So in advance of the savings that need to be made next year on the palms, which is taking them out of the arches, there is ten thousand pounds already allocated for moving them around, planting them, making it so that we can look after them in-house. Just to dot the i's and cross the t's, Maxine has actually been exploring a watering system for the arches where the technicians could water them from the top. So it's not, there isn't a decision yet, made yet, but it is just a last consideration before saying, no, they're all going.
Councillor Green?
If we have the waters on the top, we could put something else colourful rather than the path.
Just to follow that up, you need something in there. If councillor Wing is perfectly right, it will, it will look quite unpleasant along there with it all full of bird muck and litter. If we don't have something in there, it focuses people's attention.
Could I just follow on from that? So something does need to be in there and there's a whole lighting system there. And the original beauty was the pullamite itself and the whole structure. And I think if the palms have to come out for cost saving, I find that a bit ridiculous when we've got Radford House. But we need to investigate, we need to aid in those lights so that actually what we're doing is showcasing the pullamite, which is an exceptional feature for this town. We can't just have nothing in there. And then we need to work out ways of keeping clear of litter and weeded on a regular basis. And all of that is going to cost.
It is, and the, the facts of matter is the pullamite belongs to Thanet District Council, not the Ramsgate Town Council. And anything we do in the relationship with electrics has got to be done by Thanet District Council, not Ramsgate Town Council. And because I see no reason why RTC should pay for any of that when it's Thanet District Council's responsibility. So I think that that's, that's the discussion that we need to have with Thanet District Council about that and the pullamite. But I, I certainly take into account what you were saying, councillor Green, about, about there. But that's something for, I don't think that's something for us to decide now. That's something that we need to, that we need to look at in the next few months before we come out, before we sort them out. But again, if we can get a watering system above it, let's see, let's see what happens with that and we'll go from there. Okay.
So next item in the budget report is the tax base. There are nearly two hundred and thirty more taxpaying properties within the parish, which if the, the council tax was to remain exactly the same, we'd get an extra nineteen thousand pounds just by virtue of there being more people contributing to the precept. The draft budget had a precept figure of one million forty thousand four hundred and fifty. To achieve this with the new tax-based figures, the, an increase of one pound seventy for the year would be needed on a band D property. Just for general reference, I've included the percentage, what the precept would look like if there was various different percentages. There is no cap to which town and parish councils can increase their precept. And the council doesn't need to use whole or half percentage points. The important thing is to ask for a sum of money that is required. The final precept figure is sometimes subject to a small amendment. It could be pounds and pennies because the, the final figure needs to be divisible by nine. Just for reference, Ramsgate Town Council's precept is around five percent of the combined rates bill for Ramsgate. Having considered the above information and the areas of the budget that were underfunded, in conjunction with the chair and the chair of FNGP, a four percent increase in the precept is proposed with an additional ten thousand going to the Future Capitals Project and Asset Acquisitions Budget and ten thousand pound going to the Community Services Budget. A four percent increase to the budget would equate to eighty five pounds and fifty five pence for a band D property, an increase of three pound twenty nine for the year, or six p a week. And there's a draft budget that reflects these updates attached. You're asked to consider three resolutions, recommendations. First of all, the town promotion committee would like to request that unspent Ramsgate money from the Ramsgate Events Budget, thirteen thousand pounds, be carried forward to next year to be used and allocated to the Obelisk Project. This is lighting up the Obelisk. We'd previously taken this out the budget and deferred it to the, the next financial year. This would bring it back into next, this coming year. To confirm that any unspent funds from the current year that are not earmarked for specific projects or ring-fenced budgets be wired into the Capital Projects and Asset Acquisitions Budget for members to allocate throughout the year. And then councillors asked whether there are any other further changes to the draft budget to be made and confirm the precept.
Councillor Green, would you share FNGP?
Councillors will remember that the FNGP. Councillors will remember that the FNGP which is the balance, balance budget. With a 3% increase in council tax and predicted 1% increase in the tax base. As you've just heard, we've slightly bigger increase in the base. And I've been persuaded that it would be better to go for a 4% increase in precept. Because we need to start putting money back into the Future Capital Projects and Asset Acquisitions Budget. That having been depleted by, or will be depleted by the Radford House project. So that's, to me, that's the reason for the change.
That's Austin.
I just wanted to ask about grants because I see we've got the events funding in, under town promotion, the other grants separately. We did agree, didn't we, that we would review our grant giving? So once we've set a figure. We'll then go back and look at how exactly we're going to divide that up. Is that, is that right?
That's true. Take place it and the FNGP Committee, it's 21st or 22nd of February.
Brilliant, thank you.
Councillor Green.
I mean, one of the questions I was going to ask is, and it is concerning Radford House again, I know probably I'm not going to be very popular. But I do think we need to be transparent and open about what, what, what present costs and future costs could probably be. So, and councillor Green has kindly said that there is an impact of Radford House. Because that's why the precept is having to increase to put the money back in. I want to ask, do we have a comprehensive and costed business plan with profit and loss? For the present, present situation with Radford House up to this point? And have we got one costed going forwards? I'd certainly like to see what we may be committing ourselves to in the future. And I also noticed, I went right back to the first Radford House meeting, which was 2001. Where there was an amount of, there was one, there was 161,240 of the legacy money left to be spent. No, there was, there was, on the 22nd of August 2019, there was a Radford House meeting. Sorry, I was trying to find my notes. It was 22nd of August 2019 and I will go through the other minutes. Because obviously I haven't attended these meetings and maybe I should. It was resolved to spend the remaining £161,240.21 of the legacy money on renovation. So I, you know, again, I'd like to see this costed out individually. We're not hiding stuff within the budget, but it's very hard to find that information. And this is clearly a big and separate project. And if we took the lift over, I'd be wanting to see that separated out as well. So in the, in the capital projects and asset and acquisition budget of 2000, up to the last point it was counted. We have £1,076,710.27 in that budget, I believe. And what I'd also like to know is how much are we earmarking for the restoration of Radford House? Because having undertaken some work on my house, I have found that because of the cost of materials, it ran away with, but it absolutely went overspent. And I'm very concerned that we could be finding ourselves in a financial situation that we don't really want to find ourselves in going forward. So A, I'd like to see those costs separate. I'd like to see what we've spent, so what we had, what we've spent. And I'd like to see the business case going forward with projections as well. And I'd like to see those separated out of the main budget so that, so that we're very clear about what we're getting into. Because I'm not clear about what we're getting into.
Thank you, Councillor Green.
You're right to be concerned, but of course, we don't know what the final cost will be because we don't know that until we get tenders for the work. What we have done is set a figure initially of £760,000 as an indication for what the, the people that are working for us should work to. There's been a 15%, this was a few years ago, there's been a 15% overall increase in costs of materials, et cetera. So that pushes it to nearer £900,000. But as I say, we don't know the final figure until we, we, we put it out to tender. We do, you know, we're using industry standards to get our predictions, but you'd never know until it goes out.
I think councillor Nixon.
So, I mean, yes, obviously we want everything to be transparent, that goes without saying. So let's ask questions. The thing that we've got to remember is the reason that we're doing the meanwhile use work is, is to help us create the business plan. And so therefore there are ongoing conversations between Susie Humphries, organizing the community use. And there's been a vast uptake of community use. That building is in constant use and we have tenants and so on and so forth. We're constantly asking questions and collecting data, also with our colleagues that we're working with to, who have experience, who have got community used buildings and projects about what they've done. So there's this ongoing data collection exercise to create a business plan. So that is something that is, is a role concept, as it were. It's not, we don't have one. We've got one that's ongoing, but we don't have a collated one that's finished. I think we also have to remember the fact that this building, because it is in public use. There's an awful lot of things that have been paid for that would needed to have been paid for even if nothing happened. So a lot of the surveys, the structural stuff and all of those things that we've had to commission would have to have been done anyway. So I mean, it looks like there's a lot of money being spent on it. But that money would have had to have been spent on it anyway. Otherwise, it's just a white fence right sitting there. And we are constantly looking at the figures of what's, as councillor Green has said. Because we do know that we had this particular figure in mind. We do know that the costs have gone up. We also have pared things back as I reported, you know, reported on several occasions about what we can do to make things effective, especially with our green issues and stuff like that. So that we're not just throwing money on anything that we don't need. And we can do it synthetically, but also cost effectively. So it's, it's forever in our minds whenever we do anything about this. We don't think that there's a blank cheque for any, for anything really.
Can I just confirm that the the, the last draft of a cost plan by our quantity surveyor that laid out the figures that councillor Green has just mentioned, did go to a council meeting. The last version of the business plan went to a council meeting. So it is, it is feeding through to the members.
I think that, that that's a lot of my concerns, that maybe this is a project that is beyond the scope of a town council. And is there going to be a point at which people around this room have got the chance to decide whether we continue this project? Given the escalating costs, or we made the decision to actually get rid of it instead?
I think I think we have to look back before we go forward. And looking back is that the decision to purchase Radford House was before any of us were elected, as far as I'm aware. I don't know if it's anybody before 2019. But certainly that was all, that would already purchased. And it was purchased in relation to the building being used for the community. The difficulty with the building is because it's a grade two listed structure. And therefore there is a lot more issues involved in that, in developing that into, into a space which is safe, comfortable. And which our residents will come and use. And as councillor Nixon said, you know, and and all power to Susie Humphries' elbow for what she's done in getting people to use it and access. But there's, there will be a point, hopefully this year, and I mean this in a building way and not in a residential way. Is that it won't be able to be used because, to a certain extent, because of the work that needs to be undertaken in it. Of course, I think, you know, we're not, we don't want Radford House to be the HS2 of Ramsgate, do we? Where, where there is, you know, we, we and our residents haven't got an amount of money that they can keep shoving in to the pot. We've, we've got to, we've got to look at every stage of it. And, and I think that that is you know, to say, I've councillor Nixon, councillor Green, who who are heading up this project, you know, the work that they've done, they've overseen and they've taken responsibility with it. You know, it's very commendable. And so I think you're right. That we do need to be vigilant of how much we're spending and how much of the council, how much of our residents' money that we're spending on this. But it is for our residents. We're not doing it as some lavish thing that we're, as a council, we're going to go and sit in here and we have our meetings in here and stuff like, and it's just for us. It's for our residents. And I, and I think that that's, that's the important thing. But you're right to raise it. And I think, you know, and as I've said, we, we are quite happy, we've just approved that we will bring all of the, ensure that every report is now separate, financial report with Radford House in it. So you can see and we can all see as to how the money's been spent.
I'd like to back it up. I just haven't suggested that, that any of the work that anyone's undertaken on Radford House
I didn't say you did. I didn't say you did.
That we were going to use it as our own little base. I just wanted to express concerns that present and future liabilities might be very difficult for this council to manage.
Don't switch my words though, councillor Green. I didn't say what you're saying I said.
I'm just saying, that's not what I said, because you put those words there. I didn't make
I didn't say you said it. I did not say that. I said it.
A discussion around saving £7,000 to manage budget and then we're looking at a possible £900,000. That will wipe out the, the capital budget as it sits nearly. Then of course we have to be concerned and of course we can't allow it to be the HS2 of
You can't compare chalk with cheese, councillor Green. You can't, you can't do that. It doesn't work like that.
So not me.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. You've had your say and thank you ever so much for that, councillor Green.
I don't think you're any more concerned than I am, councillor. And to answer you directly, there are various stages where we could pull the plug on the project. The last one being when we get the tenders back. You don't have to go ahead then. Capital expenditure is what it is, you know, it's a one-off capital expenditure. We would then have a resource for the town. I think the least that this council can expect is that, is that the project will space going forward in terms of recurrent expenses. And that will presumably be a paper that you'll get when we are in a position to do that.
Thank you, councillor Green. Councillor Nixon.
Thank you. Sorry, one thing I forgot to say was AP Construction, who are project managers and quantity surveyors and so on and so forth. Paul, I can't remember his name. Paul, anyway. Paul is going to come to the next council meeting, give us a rundown of everything so far.
Brilliant.
We're on the cusp of reading the sage hall. So things are, you know, progressing well and, and we are, you know, looking at the next stage. So he's going to come back to the next council, which is why I wasn't reporting this evening. But he's going to fill you in on that things he's collecting information from various groups and maybe things in there. So you're aware. Before the agenda comes out.
Councillor Baker.
I was just wondering how much money the meantime use has produced for the project, whether it causes the greatest example or?
No, it wasn't meant to either. What we were doing is we were looking to see what so it's testing waters in lots of ways. So, you know, what could we rent the rooms for? Asking people information and questionnaires, you know.
I understand that, but I think we've been far rented out.
Yes, yes. So we have
And it's got some income.
£4,050.
And we've also got a grant for some work too. So the chat time. So again, it was, that was the meantime use. What could we look for funding for, which groups would, you know, come with funding and so on and so forth. Yeah, always. I mean, everything that we've done so far has been with the business plan in mind and, and the people that are in the meetings with me will know that that's the thing I bang on about the most is this thing has to wash its face, as I'm constantly saying, so.
That's great.
Two points. First, I love what you raised, because we're not we're not charging
Commercial rates.
The commercial rates, because it's a building that is in the state that it's in. The second point. Second point is that we have cut back on some of the things that we originally intended. For instance, I mean, probably the biggest one is we're no longer planning to have a lift to the second floor. A, because we don't think we need it in order to be able to rent out the rooms, but B, because it's just so expensive.
Okay, anybody else got anything? Councillor Nixon.
Any other grants available going forward?
I applied for a community ownership fund grant before Christmas for £300,000. Unfortunately, it wasn't successful. We were invited to apply again and the second application was submitted today. Slightly less money, just under £250,000. Thanks.
And that particular grant, you can keep applying for, there are at least two more.
And if any of you want to lock out the kit, that'd be good, councillor Green.
Most of it is capital. Just shy of £230,000 is for capital. And then I've also asked them to pay for our quantity surveyor and contract administrator, which is just over 10.
Okay, members, any, any other comments at all in relation to the budget setting in the precept?
Just a question, because this was before our time. This behest of the town, you know, it was less. When what was attached to it? Bigly. I mean
I've got a clue. What, you mean the sales say, I bequeath you this money provided Benefit of the town. Yeah. Yeah. And, and also you have to drive pigs up Harbour Street. Once every Okay.
There's, there's three questions, which I've read out. Can I just go from one as a
Are you happy with what the town clerk has read out as what your, the proposals are? So can I have a proposal to accept those?
I was, I was just going to say yes. Sorry.
Councillor Green, second up for that, councillor Nixon. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those games abstain. Right, thank you for that, members. That was important that we did that because it has to go to TDC in the morning, so. Okay, item six, regeneration partnership board. And this is to consider an invitation from Thannet District Council to appoint a representative to the newly formed regeneration partnership board. The terms of reference for the board are also attached here. Members are asked to consider a motion from myself. The councillor Green be the council's representative on the board. For those of you who are not those of you who are not up with it, this is, the government decided that in relation to the levelling up fund schemes. That there would be this new, as they called it, regeneration board. And because we've got two levelling up funds, one in Mountgate, one in Margate. And because we've got two levelling up funds, one in Ramsgate, one in Margate, they are now joined. So there will be quite a lot of representatives on this regeneration board. And effectively, again, it's an overseeing board of what's happening and the money's been spent. Why has it been spent there? Why has it not been spent there? As previously agreed, I don't know if it's from me anyway, but the, the chair of the council would be the re, the representative. As I'm part of Thanet District Council's cabinet, I'm already not on the regeneration board, but I fully know what's going on all of the time. And it seemed fit that councillor Green, because of his interest in it, would be the ideal person to, to take on that role, which is, which he's agreed that he would like to do.
Chair, do you mind if I just go and check that our front doors close where there's some excitement outside?
Do you want me to go? Take the dollar. Right, members, after that little bit of excitement there, what's going on outside in the street? Bring you back to this item of the regeneration partnership board. So that's, the proposal for me is that, is that councillor Green be part of the regeneration board on behalf of Ramsgate Town Council. That's an issue proposed.
Do I just ask a question?
Yes.
How will councillor Green report back as a town council?
However he wants.
What I'm suggesting, because I, I was asked, is that any communication to me also goes through the town clerk? And I would report back after each of the four town quarterly meetings.
Great, thank you.
Can I have a show of hands? All in favour, please show. Thank you. That's carried. Thank you very much. Item seven, assets war wreck skate park. And this is to receive the written report from the town clerk regarding a war wreck skate park and note the information, it's there for information for you to note it. You want to?
Thank you, Chair. Was it the council meeting in March last year, the councillors received a report from councillor Austin? Considered the proposal therein that the council should explore the option of an asset transfer of the skate park at the War Recreation Ground with Thanet District Council. It was resolved to defer the matter for the new council to consider and for myself to come to you with more information about how such an arrangement would work. The new head of property is now aware that the cabinet, chief executive, director of environment and head of coastal and public realm are aware of and supportive of this transfer and is now considering the, the mechanism for this to take place. I think like a lot of things with transfers from T D C, it can be a little bit of a chicken and egg where we need to see what their proposal is, see if it's suitable to us. But then they want our confirmation that we definitely want it before putting in legwork to do the paperwork. So at the moment, you're just asked to note this information and wait for the communication.
I mean, all I can say to you is as well is that I have had, albeit a brief discussion with the head of service of estates in relation to this. And it was in relation to a lease of the land. And there are some evidently, I don't know anything about it, what that lease is or anything, but there is a complication if there is a lease of over seven years as to the cost. But that's something really that Laura will explore. And then we'll come back to you as to with what the issues are. Councillor Austin.
I think the, the issue about the length of lease, obviously, as Mr Marmo from T D C has recommended, a much longer lease on the basis that it will be difficult to secure funding, which is the sort of thing that we obviously need if we don't have a long lease. It's going to be that, that's going to be the tricky point, isn't it?
It is.
Town council, whether it's a trust, the same issue will arise.
I understand that, but at the end of the day, it's not, it's not Mr Marmo who will make the decision.
That's his recommendation, his actual recommendation, isn't it?
So, I think we need to, we've got to balance that out and, and they've got to, they've got to work that out, so.
If, if, may I mention that you have said this about the length of lease?
Yes, by all means.
When, in correspondence, because I, I had an email since you chased it with the head of service.
Yeah, by all means.
The town clerk's been.
By all means, I've, I'm good.
Thank you.
Members, sorry, councillor Green.
I know you're being a bit dim, but I'm not sure what the point of Ramsgate Town Council taking this over. If we raise funds, we would have to sublease it or something to another organisation. T D C could do that.
They could, but I, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just following on from what the, the discussions have been. Councillor Austin, maybe you can shed some light?
Yes, the original thinking way back when we first put in with the skate park. Put in the proposal to T D C. It was with you two, either the town council or a trust, taking over the skate park area. On the basis of that, Sport England had a hundred percent funding for skate parks and the like, which they need to give to town and parish councils, but they would only give fifty percent funding to district councils. So it made sense at that stage, if you think about that, because T D C took so long to respond, eleven months.
Well, we, we know the reason for that because there was no head of service, that's what.
We, we chased it, chased it back. Sport England no longer has that funding. Therefore, it may be now no longer appropriate for our town council to pick this and that we set up a trust instead. Either way, it would be very, very difficult for T D C to bid for external funds for this type of project. Whereas it would be easier for the town council and for the trust to do it. But the point of the town council doing it has to some extent got to be.
Well, I, I'm suggesting that, if you have any mind to information that you've just stated there, that we allow town clerk to continue discussions with T D C in relation to, to it. And then I think we need a full discussion.
Yes.
In relation to this to decide whether T D C, R T C wishes to carry on with it. No, okay. Yeah, okay. Members in approval of that? Just answer that.
One more question.
Yeah, of course.
High Factory is, is almost adjacent to this. It would make sense for them to be involved, I was talking to them.
Yeah, well, that's, I think the first, the first step is to, is to see what T D C will actually offer or want in, in, in exchange for a transfer. So I think we just need to carry on with that for, and then if necessary, David, then, yeah, then we'll talk the High Factory.
We have so many useful workers on the skate park.
Yeah, yeah, which is great. Yeah, which is great.
So we've got those links.
Members, all in favour to note the reports? Thank you. Right, item eight, this is a confidential matter. And so I'm requesting members to exclude the public and the press from this meeting in accordance with part one of schedule twelve A of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two. So can I have a proposer to councillor Nixon, second to councillor Heffernan? All those in favour, please show. Thank you very much for the, the pressure. Sorry, our residents and members of the public who are watching, but this is a private matter, so the.